Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Tuesday, May 28, 2019, at 7:00 PM for open session. We are reconvening from the closed session, and there are no reportable action taken at the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by me, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Joel Huckman, our Director of Public Safety. Please rise. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, the gift of community. We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We recognize your presence among us tonight. As we meet today, please remember those who serve in our military, those who are in public safety, those are first responders. Please keep them safe so that they can continue to keep us safe. As we gather today to discuss the business before us, please give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the clear mind so that we can make the best decisions for the best of our city. Also, please remember those who are homeless, those who are oppressed, those who are ill, especially those who are homebound, and those who have nothing to eat. Please give them comfort and keep them safe. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands."
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Huckman. All right, moving on to City Council announcements. The City Council has introduced ordinance number 1375, amending various sections of the Bellflower Municipal Code to regulate vacant properties within the city. So responding to a lot of complaints by residents and business owners about those vacant properties, so we're addressing that issue. Vacant properties means any real property that is either undeveloped or has an existing onsite structure or other improvement, including, without limitation, improved parking lots and spaces that's either abandoned, vacant, or unleased by the responsible party for more than ninety days. So it can be vacant lot or vacant building that's been abandoned for more than ninety days. To learn more about these provisions of the new ordinance that will affect vacant properties, please visit bellflower.org and read this month's Bellflower E-Citizen Newsletter. Mayor Protem Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beginning June 1st, seniors and people with disabilities receiving social security income benefits may be eligible to receive CalFresh food benefits. CalFresh is a federally funded program that provides monthly benefits to assist low-income households in purchasing food. To see if you qualify for the program, or if you have any questions related to this, please contact the LA County Department of Public Social Services by calling 866-613-3777. And I'll repeat that, it's 866-613-3777. Or visit their website at www.dpsss.lacounty.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Garza. Councilmember Ray Denton?
Thank you, Mayor. Save the date. Bellflower's Day of the Shred will be taking place here Saturday, June 8th, at Sims Park in the parking lot from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Shredded trucks will be on the site to provide free shredding for Bellflower residents, available on a first-come, first-served basis. Limit is five boxes or bags per vehicle. For more information, please call the Sims Park at 562-866-7510. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Ray Denton? Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 2019 Parks and Recreation Summer Brochure has been mailed out. The brochure is filled with information on upcoming summer family activities, city news, volunteer opportunities, and different program information. If you did not receive the brochure, you can find it online. The version is brochure on www.bellflower.org under the Parks and Recreations tab. If you have any questions, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2261. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, the city recognized more than ninety volunteers who dedicated their time in making a difference in the city of Bellflower. And I thought I heard ten thousand hours? Maybe that's a good number, but that's what I thought I heard. So we are very grateful for all the volunteers, and there's also some organizations too that do provide, again, service to this community, and we want to thank them for their service to our community. So if you'd like to become a volunteer, please contact the Bellflower Volunteer Center at 562-804-1424, and that's at extension 2331. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Also tonight, we're doing a proclamation. Let me just read the proclamation. The city of Bellflower proclaims Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I'll just read a section of this long proclamation. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders have made valuable contributions to our country, state, and city, achieving success in all aspects of society, including business, medicine, education, politics, science, and the arts. Now therefore, I, Sani Ar Santinas, Mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. Signed, Mayor Sani Ar Santinas, Mayor Protem Juan Garza, Councilmember Ray Denton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, and Councilmember Dan Coops. And also, in addition to that, a couple of weeks ago, we had a big celebration at the Main Event Center honoring the Asian American Pacific Islanders sponsored by this Southern California Edison. It was a well-attended event. All right, moving on, public comments. Mr. Stewart?
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You will be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
Okay, anyone would like to speak about an item that's not in the agenda?
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, gentlemen, I have a couple of questions here that I wanted to bring forward to you.
Mr. Butts, can you please sign in just for the record?
Yeah, I'd already signed in.
Oh, you did? Okay, thank you.
Food carts in this town. These wooden food carts that are put together in somebody's backyard or whatever the hell it is. They can't be, they gotta be a health hazard. It's unfortunate that you have to license some of these things because now it's all a cash sale, and it's putting the businessperson that's in a hard-shell building out of work. He could lose his business over this. It was a very bad move that stupid Jerry Brown proposed. I would like something done about this, especially these carts running around. Terrible-looking pieces of plywood and junk, and washing the utensils in the gutter. I've seen it happen myself, and nobody else seems to see it, apparently. The code enforcement, public safety, they just zing along in that vehicle, and it'll do nothing. But something needs to be done about that. Plus, it's making it look like Bellflower's name changed. Tijuana Bellflower. The shame. The other thing is across from Taco Nasos, I hope we don't have the same thing happen across the street where they're planning on opening up that restaurant that we did with Taco Nasos and didn't catch it for almost a year. It doesn't have a grease clarifier. So that means everything's going into the gutter system. So I hope you're not gonna let them open, and we go through this turmoil again. Plus, I wonder if anybody done a core sample of the soil over there, because there used to be a gas station. I wonder if the tanks were ever taken out of the ground. Something the planning department and everything should have looked at, I think, but apparently they haven't. But I'd like something done on that basis. The one thing that Kenny has gotten me for years is, can't we do something about a color code? I know it's kind of rough, because you're picking on people because they want lime green and purple and all this other stuff. But it seems as though there's something can be taken into effect on turning that around because, like I mentioned before, we don't want to be known as Little Tijuana. It's a disgrace. Code enforcement, public safety, five days a week, Monday through Friday. All the illegal stuff gets taken care of and done on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. So why don't we offset the dates? You're on, you got Monday and Tuesday off, next month you'll have Monday and Tuesday off. Let's let somebody else ride around and catch some of this nonsense. You're losing money with permits, with business licenses, everything. Nobody seems to give a darn. Nobody's thinking outside the box. I think some people would love to have Monday and Tuesday off so they could shop and not fight with the traffic and pester everybody on Saturday, Sunday. So it'd be something to look at, and, like I say, you're losing money left and right. The other thing is, I think it was two weeks ago, when you decided to do some sort of a monument over the veterans thing, which I really commend you for it. But I hope it's not something very insignificant. I don't want it to be very lavish, like our $200,000 cow that seemed to be so important at that time with certain people in this town. So I don't want to see a little $20,000 plaque go up, is what I'm saying. Twenty thousand versus people that defended this country for everybody's well-being. I don't want to see a $20,000 plaque. I don't want to see that $200,000 cow either, but that happened. So let's do it and do it right. Then I'm wondering when we can bring up the rental factor, the apartment tax. It's been ongoing, and I've hammered on this for three years. We're losing so much money over this. City doesn't even know what, how many rentals there are out there. Single families, they haven't got a clue. I got a neighbor next door to me that's been renting for four years now. Ain't paying no fee, but nobody checks on nothing. But you get these characters riding around town, $100,000 a year, nothing else to do, but the blindfolders, I don't collect my check at the end of the week. They can be utilized for better services, better purposes. So I would like to see some changes made. I'm just giving you some suggestions, because I know this pot tax isn't working out very well due to everybody dragging their feet, so the income isn't there. I think it's a short-lived thing, very short-lived anyhow. But I'm trying to generate some dollars for you, at least give you my thoughts of how to do it. And I'd like to see it taken care of. But there's items here that need to be taken care of and looked at. And I'm glad I picked the paper up. The county's spending $460 million for homeless. Well, that's fine and dandy, that helps. But the thing that irritates me is where do we stand on this sanctuary city nonsense? Because as a veteran and seeing some of these veterans on the street homeless and not getting a stinking dime from anybody for it, and here we're giving it to all these illegals skipping across the border, I find that to be insane and insulting. And I think the city of Bellflower should join in with Orange County and get rid of this sanctuary city nonsense that LA has adopted.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stewart, regarding the food cart, my understanding is there's been a number of citations given?
Correct. And we've written several sites over the last, we've been out there three of the last four weekends, I believe. We've written at least eight sites that I know of on illegal food carts that don't meet standards on that, and we'll continue to enforce that as we catch them.
And they were given on a weekend?
Correct, on a Sunday.
So somebody was working during the weekend? Okay, just want to clarify that. And also, can you confirm that as of today, there have been no license issued for a food cart?
Correct.
Okay, so if you see any food cart out there, it's not licensed? As of today, there's no licensed food cart. It's called code enforcement, because they've been giving citations already for the last couple of weeks. Okay, thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Josh Murray. I'm here on behalf of Clifton and Bracken Seek Library, 9945 Flower Street. I'm very pleased to announce that we are bringing back our very, very popular free lunch at the library program during the summer for children eighteen and under. We will be serving free lunches between June 10th and August 2nd, with the exception of Fourth of July, Monday through Friday, 12 to 1:00 PM. Again, this is a free lunch for anyone eighteen and under, and this is an extremely popular program, so I'm happy that we can bring it back again. And I look forward to seeing all of the kids in the community enjoying their free lunches.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Would it be possible to add that to our website, that announcement, just for the general public? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council.
Good evening, sir. Can you just please sign in?
Oh, sorry, yes.
You won't believe it, but your name will be in the minutes of the meeting.
So I had a couple of things to kind of talk about. I'm a member of District 4, and I live specifically around the Rose and Clark intersection. And over the years, I've noticed something that I consider very troubling, is that there's been a lot of accidents and fatalities at that area. Now, there's a crosswalk there in-
Clark and Rose?
Clark and Rose Street?
Okay.
Yes. That's on the border of Lakewood and Bellflower. So, you know, it's very troubling.
There's a liquor store in the northeast, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So the immediate businesses on that intersection are Danny's Liquor Store and Taco's Imperial and so, as I said, I've noticed a lot of fatalities, incidents, and it's largely, I believe it's due to the fact that there is a crosswalk there, but there is no sort of regulation to that crosswalk. As a frequent commuter of that zone, I actually observe a lot of cars going at anywhere between forty, forty-five miles an hour in a thirty-five mile-per-hour zone. And I think it's, you know, it's gotten to the point where I believe that the city of Bellflower should kind of examine and address these issues in that area.
You mean enforcement? Is that what you mean, or regulation?
I personally would like to see a stop sign put at that area. I think it would be beneficial for possibly congestion on Artesia and Clark, and also, you know, due to the fact that people are speeding there on a daily basis, and we're not talking, you know, five miles over the speed limit. We're talking, you're going, I've seen people go at forty-five to fifty-five miles an hour there. And it's, you know, it's right next to a retirement home. I worry about our older citizens who live there. I also worry about the fact that this is a crossing where we have Craig Williams Elementary School, and we also have children coming in from Mayfair High School. So the other thing that I did want to talk about was the Lakewood Plaza that is currently owned by Kimco Realty. I was just wondering if there was any updates on that, because I have been noticing increasing blight and a lot more homeless people, RVs, truckers, people basically squatting on that parking lot. Yeah, sorry if anybody hadn't anything on that. As for that issue, I would appreciate if, you know, maybe we could, I know that the new ordinance will be hopefully reducing some of those issues, but, you know, if the issues persist, I think maybe it would be good to reach out to Kimco Realty. I know they are a publicly traded real estate investment trust. So it's, I think personally, as a resident of that area, I've seen the effects of not having the services that we used to have. My grandparents and also my family, some of the older people in my family, no longer have grocery stores that are nearby them. As a matter of fact, District 4, as I see it right now on Google Maps and the surrounding area, we're pretty much a food desert for the city of Bellflower, which is, I don't think is acceptable. Yeah, so that's about it, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart, can we address the, can we look into the crosswalk on Rose and-
Sure, yeah.
And Clark?
I've got a word on that. On at least two occasions, first of all, our motor deputy is aware of that particular intersection, and on two occasions, we've done crosswalk operations there where somebody will cross, and then if the cars don't yield, then a ticket's issued. I know that firsthand. I was a volunteer in that for one occasion. Please don't tell risk manager, Jeff, on that. But it's an intersection where, because the speeds are decent along Clark, and it is something that we need to pay attention to, and I'm just here to say we have been.
The warrants, too. We're looking at the warrants for the stop sign. If he requests a stop sign, we certainly could see if it meets warrants to do that, too.
Sure. Jerry Stock can easily take a look and decide whether the state guidelines would apply for a stop sign.
And you might as well address the truck situation.
Right, and also, I've been in touch with Kimco and for a number of times, and I think I've emailed a few of you on that as it's come up. It's a private property. They need to manage their private property and enforce their rules, and if there's vehicles there that aren't related to customer activity, they need to tow them. And we've offered ourselves multiple times, if you want us to conduct a towing operation and assume the responsibility of those tows, we'll be there to keep the peace. We can send deputies over a piece of cake. And for reasons unknown, they are resistant to do that. So I'm not sure if they're just trying to avoid the liability of enforcing those kinds of rules, but at least thus far, in our conversations, we haven't made any headway with that. But it would be, in my mind, not hard for them to do it and not hard for us to be a partner in that.
Okay. Mayor? Yeah, go ahead.
If that's the case, maybe we need to look into, you know, get them to abate the condition through a legal remedy.
I believe code's looking at that not through the property managers, but with the property owner. And as you know, sometimes those are a little-
Well, Kimco's not the property manager.
Hard to get to.
Kimco's not the property owner.
Management company.
Management company, got it.
So there is works afield in play with code enforcement, taking a little time. A quicker solution, in my mind, is what I just described.
And the ordinance regarding vacant properties that will take into effect thirty days from tonight if it's approved by the city council?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment. Just wanted to thank the young gentleman for coming up here and sharing your concerns from your neighborhood. It helps us out. And one of the things I want to share with you and the whole community is that tonight, as part of one of the items we're considering as part of our budget, the council has added an item to hire a consultant to come in and assess citywide reports, like you reported in terms of the high rate of speed that people are driving through in our city. And so the consultant's gonna come in and assess that and look at ways that we can, what they call calm traffic, which is either stop signs or speed humps, all kinds of different strategies that we frankly don't know about, but that they can guide us on. Your comments are in line with what we're hearing in different parts of the town, not just in the fourth district. So just know it's not unique to you, but we appreciate you coming in and sharing that. It's absolutely a public safety concern, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening. I had a question, you know.
Can you sign in?
Yeah, I signed in.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, how are you?
I haven't seen you for a long time.
Wonderful, wonderful. No, I just had a question. You know, you said something about the ordinance that you were gonna vote on tonight regarding the abandoned property and the ordinance. I mean, isn't that, that was already in the Bellflower Municipal Code, is Section 8.4? Or no?
It was expanded to include vacant lots.
Right, okay. Huh. I mean, that's been in the municipal code for years and years and years, right?
Yeah, and then also they have to register the property if it's vacant, and then they have to do a lot of landscaping and things like that. So it's a lot more teeth, and there's also lots of penalties.
Right, right, just to, you know, combat blight and all that, right?
Correct.
You know, I have a question. You know, there's the closed-down fence company on Alondra, the one that's been abandoned for a long time, I don't know what, Atlantic Fence?
Which one?
Atlantic Fence, I think.
The hazardous waste.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
With the radioactive waste. You know, that was, I'm just curious, you know, that was an eyesore for so long, I mean, so long. And I just want to know why the city, why they didn't register that property as far as, you know, them registering it and maintaining it and securing it, why that was, you know, just nowhere to be seen for so many years.
Registered, I don't, I'm not scared of doing it.
I just want to know, I just want to know why the city, you know, why they didn't enforce any of the maintenance or security requirements, you know, for vacant and abandoned properties for that particular property for so many years. Yeah, it's been a long time.
That's not why they found what they found, is because we went through a legal procedure to get on the property.
Right.
You just can't go on someone's property and start looking into things with a court order.
Right, right.
We finally got a court order, then we got on to the property, and that's when it got from bad to worse.
And I mean, you know, and it was radioactive waste, right? Just to be, wow. You know, do you guys know how many people live in the mobile home park right next door? You know how many people live there? How many residents?
I know it's a lot, it's a lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you'd really be surprised at the number of people that have been sick for the last however many years. And I mean, I know for a fact that the city and the Sheriff's Department, you know, they were there for years and years and years kicking out the vagrants and trying to, you know, keep, maintain the security. And, I mean, they knew about the hazardous materials in, but they just, I don't know why they didn't choose to, you know, have it cleaned up or notify anybody, but-
So it's been addressed already, and we are moving forward with it?
I don't even think we have possession from the AQMD or anybody yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, we can't even get on the property right now.
Really?
It looks like it is, because they won't allow us to do anything. It's still under the federal jurisdiction.
Wow, I thought that the ordinance and even 8.4-
State and feds trump us.
Really? Okay, I kind of gave the city all the authority, but I'm-
Until they're done. When they close their case, then we can do something.
The investigation's still ongoing, huh? All right, okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving forward, there are no public hearings tonight. There are no ordinance sets and resolutions for consideration, so we're moving on to item 13A. Mr. Stewart?
This is consideration, possible action to adopt Resolution Number 19-36, a resolution adopted pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code, Section 10.10.160 and Section 10.12.040, to establish thirty-minute parking zone on Virginia Avenue for all vehicles other than those with a valid parking permit.
Okay, Mr. Huckman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Very briefly, and from your staff report, you'll note that what we're looking at or proposing is something of a pilot study, if you will, not just for the area that we're proposing, but potentially other places in town should the need arise, and we would have this kind of a concept in place should it work. We are fully expecting that there might need to be some change or adjustments as we go over time if the proposed time limitations don't quite meet the objective. And as you know, the objective is largely to deal with, I'll call them rogue car dealers that don't really have a legal presence in town, but in various cities, and sometimes in our city, these individuals, these companies will find public streets and use them to their advantage to advertise and to store vehicles that would otherwise require paying, you know, for their own property. And they can get away with that for a period of time, and especially because the vehicles that are out there aren't registered to a dealer in most cases. They don't transition the ownership from the individual selling it to them to their own name, and so there they are as, under a variety of names, coming back to a variety of addresses and so on. So it's very difficult to deal with that in a traditional parking enforcement sense. What we found is that ticketing is not effective. We've given numerous tickets, a hundred and some tickets in the last few years in that area, but very few of them are paid because they basically go to purgatory when there's no defined owner. So what does work is towing. If you tow a car, the individual that owns that vehicle has to- So what does work is towing. If you tow a car, the individual that owns that vehicle has to fess up and say, okay, it's mine, and get it registered in their name, and pay penalties for not having it registered timely, and then pay the towing charge, and then pay the city fee, so that's, that's a good way to do it, we think, to modify behavior. So what we're proposing to do, and we believe we're in step with the neighborhood there on Virginia, uh, at least for phase one of this experiment, simply to put up signs, we're gonna ticket or tow any vehicle staying more than thirty minutes without a permit. We have permits that we can provide to the Virginia residents at no cost, since the city is, this isn't a traditional parking district like you're accustomed to. It doesn't fall under the same criteria. So we thought we could at least make them available, give it a try, and see if it works. Now, one of the complications is we have a number of residents living on Palm around the corner that also would make use of the public street on Virginia. So we can't completely lock it down to just Virginia residents. That would be unfair to our members of the public around the corner. At the same time, we can't end the restriction too early in the day, because then the car dealers might still have the ability to move around cars and, and still make use of that place overnight. So for now, we're setting it at six P M. to where at six P M., then the restriction goes off for the night, and then allows people in, coming home in the evening, if they live on Palm, to have access to the street. That may not be late enough. We'll see. Again, step one, phase one. We do have, I think, a member or two from the Virginia neighborhood that might have something to say on this, but that's effectively what we're trying to do. And we're asking for permission, in conclusion, that if we do need to make some subtle adjustment to the time or the restriction or the geography of the district, that we just be allowed to look at that and deal with it administratively and not have to keep coming back. So that's really it, my proposal or my, uh, presentation, so if you have any questions, we have to answer those.
Okay, um, Joe, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned that, um, a lot of the, um, parking tickets were kind of ignored because the, um, the real owner basically, um, gave up the ownership of the vehicle, and so their name is in the title, but it hasn't transferred yet to the car dealership.
Correct.
Okay, um, when they give a citation, do they check, um, who is the registered owner and what's, and what's the address?
We certainly can, and that's why we gave so many tickets.
Right now, do they do it now?
Sure, not every, not every of every ticket, but in that case, it's been something we focused on, so they do run them. But we still, what we have reason to believe is the vehicle is associated with a dealer, having maybe seen it come out, or maybe it's not registered to the area. So we've been giving tickets for, um, you know, parking in excess of, uh, seventy-two hours or something like that, or expired registration, sort of hoping that it'll find a home, whether it be with the dealer or whatever. In a couple cases, the prior owner would contact us, hey, I sold that car to this, to this group. It's no longer mine, and we would change the name of, on the ticket to the dealership, redo the ticket. But they're, they're not really an established car dealership, and so they don't really have a legal presence in town, so they're kind of just hard to get a hold of too, and so they're not paying the tickets either.
Okay, so in, in the, um, in the, uh, staff report here, uh, in terms of the, the fiscal impact, you said would be subjected to towing or fifty-two dollar parking citation. So who makes the decision, decision whether it's gonna be towed or given a site?
Well, it'd be officer discretion, individuals, but our intention is towing. We just wanted to maintain as much flexibility as we could for this experiment. But the reason we're doing this is to be able to tow without having to wait seventy-two hours for a vehicle that wasn't moved.
Okay, so that brings me back to my first question. Uh, i- if the, uh, the sheriff or code enforcement, sees a car that's parked there, okay, basically illegally, uh, if they check the address of the owner, uh, would it be more prudent to, if the owner lives on Virginia, would it be more prudent for the, the, um, uh, person giving the citation to give a citation instead of having it towed?
Right, our objective is to assist the members of the neighborhood, not be, um, putting hardship on them.
Right, so I'd rather see that as being given citations.
You bet.
If the, if the owner lives in the area based on the registration, I'd rather see them being, giving, giving, being given a citation instead of the car being towed. Okay, um, what do you, how do you plan on notifying the neighbors about this new resolution?
Well, there's not a lot of residences in that area, so it'd be easy to go door to door. I've done some of that already.
About how many residents?
Oh, there's a couple or few apartments, and I would think.
How many units, probably?
I.
More than twenty?
More than twenty, but not, I wouldn't think too many more. One of our residents, it might speak.
Okay, so you plan on.
Probably can give a better number.
So you plan on knocking, knocking at the door and letting them know?
We'll make sure that everybody's fully aware, 'cause it'll be some time before the signs go up, and we'll have.
All right, and when do you, when do you plan on implementing this resolution if it's passed by the city council tonight?
It'd be up to Public Works to get the signs up, and then it'll be up to us to go through potentially a warning period or advising and, and make sure everybody's aware of the new rules, and.
So within a couple of weeks?
We can ease into it.
Or sometime next month?
Yeah, we can't do, uh, any enforcement till the signs go up, so.
Okay.
That could be a work order that'll go in, I would guess, soon, since you're asking.
Okay, good, good. All right, very good. That's all I have for now. Any question for Joe?
I, I do.
Mayor Ploton Garza?
Just a couple. Um, so, from reading the report, every resident around there will get a free permit, or permits to park?
Right, we'll try to assess need. Maybe it's one per household, maybe it's two per household. We kinda have to figure that out.
And then, um, so, I know there was a court decision recently, I think it was a federal court decision on tracking cars, marking tires for movement. Uh, so, the indicator in, in your pilot project would be not necessarily marking the car, but whether if a car has a permit or not on its.
That's right. We would still have to determine the vehicle without a permits has been there for more than thirty minutes.
Correct.
And we're still in marking mode. Um, there's legal opinions on that finding as to whether A, it applies to us, and B, C, D, that it has these various holes in it. Um, our city attorney's reviewing a, a legal opinion, um, here, and we're waiting to hear if there's anything that he sees we need to change in our practice, but, but for now, it's, it's all systems go. We're a, we're a marking city.
Okay, and that's the way you would find out if it had been there for thirty minutes or more, right?
Sure.
Okay, and then the last question I have is, it's really more of a comment. I know that, uh, like, the area around LAX has been hit by similar circumstances of, of there being operations at LAX that promote, like, long-term parking solutions, and people expect that their cars are being parked in structures or being secured, but in fact, they're being put out in local neighborhoods and residential areas and being parked out there for long periods of time. And so I know the local residences around there have gone through similar challenges of cars being parked in neighborhoods that shouldn't be there. I'm sharing that with you just in case, as, since this is a pilot project, hopefully this works out, and there's not an issue, but if not, maybe that, those are alternates.
Sure.
Or some alternate case study, so.
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any question?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Question?
I.
All right.
Oh, I am, so, sorry.
Oh, go, go ahead.
I was waiting.
No, I'm okay.
Okay, good. All right, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Joel, um, so, um, these, these cars that are being sold, so you've only spotted them on Virginia for now. That's been reported.
Well, we have reason to believe there're gonna be other places, parking lot, private property where the.
Just in that area.
Yeah, this particular area, even beyond Virginia, is where we're focusing.
Yeah.
We've had issues over, over the years, different places in town. This is the worst, most recent, and one we think we can do something about.
So you're finding that these cars aren't tied to the car dealer around the corner there? Is that, is that what?
What's interesting is.
Is a possibility, I don't, you know, because of, he doesn't have enough room on, on.
Well, that's it. They don't have any legal license to sell anymore. There's been a number of used car dealers on that lot that you're talking about over the years, come and go.
Yeah.
And right now, there is no one there that's supposed to be there as a car dealership, and so that's why they've kind of seem to be morphing into just public street use, and that's what we can't tolerate, and the residents have been very patient, and we appreciate that.
Did you find the issue on Palm also?
Yeah, reports, uh, mostly, uh, Virginia's what we're gonna start with, but we believe Palm has had some of the same problems. The area behind, the area of Palm behind Stater Brothers is private property, so we can't
Yeah.
deal with that, but the, the section of Palm east of Virginia, along the park there, that's all our, our public property, and we may have to extend the, the boundaries of the district over to Palm in phase two, if there is one, for that very reason.
I did have a chance to go out a couple times during the weekend to see it at night and at the day, and it's an, it's an impacted area, from the standpoint of parking availability. The, at both times, both streets were completely full. Now, I did see some overflow into the private area behind the, the old market. Uh, so, and, and, and I know that's private, and it's not being kept up, because there's always trashing together and so on, so that's, that's just a big picture comment about, you know, uh, down the road, need to, need to, you know, need to enforce that area, but, uh, all right.
And, uh, just doing Virginia for phase one is very tangible. Artesia to Palm.
Yeah, it's a.
If we go onto Palm, it'll be, how far down do we go, and, you know, try to encompass what we need without going too far.
No, I understand, yeah.
That, that's something we hope we don't have to do, but we might.
It's a start, and I think, uh, yeah.
I think so.
But I, uh, just for record, I, I did not see any cars with, I was looking for, for sale signs on the cars, too.
Most of them don't. They, they're very, they blend in. They know better than that, because that'll draw attention to themselves.
All right.
So most of them, you wouldn't be able to tell unless you saw them moved out and moved back, and and the residents have been helpful at pointing out which ones, quite honestly, they'll see it happen, so.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Hamada. I'd like to invite the members of the public to please, uh, address this issue. I know it's something that's been bothering you. And first of all, I want to thank you for showing up at this meeting.
Good afternoon. Um, I am, my name is Greg Cuevas. I am one of the residents on Virginia Avenue. Uh, I've been a resident for about four years now, going on five, and this issue that we're having has been mainly within the last year. Uh, the dealership in question is, I believe, the sole problem that we're having. They have been parking their overflow vehicles all along Virginia on both sides, along Palm, the parking lot, and then the old Big O tires, the gym, all that, along Artesia Boulevard on the two-hour parking sign, which they constantly go over on timing. We have a really, really tough time finding parking. Just like, uh, Joel mentioned, there isn't a lot of, we're not a lot of apartments. I wanna say about twenty to twenty-five. But we all pretty much in a way fight for three or four spots if we get lucky. One thing that you guys mentioned as far as giving citations only to Virginia Avenue, uh, the Virginia residents, might or might not be a good idea, just in case if this said dealership starts actually registering their vehicles to one of those Virginia addresses that are in the vacant lots. So if.
Oh, they're gonna find a loophole.
If they find that loophole, if they find that loophole to start registering vehicles at a Virginia address, which they are in, then that kinda defeats the purpose. I kinda say towing is the best solution, although I do understand and I appreciate the, the help, I guess.
I'm kinda mindful about you, you know, how would you feel if your car is towed?
Right, and I totally, I totally understand that now, if there's any sort of restriction to allow only permits to be issued to the actual residences of Virginia Avenue and not the two or three addresses that are the vacant lots, as you could say, that might help the issue.
I'm sure the vacant lots will not be given a parking permit.
Well, I, I understand that, but if the, these people have been finding loophole after loophole to get around public safety code enforcement for.
I think we can plug that easily, right, Joel?
Is there cars, are they tied to the house where they're registered to, and is there a limit on the number of cars to each house that you issue permits for?
Yeah, we would probably, we would need to find, uh, what's the need for that. Maybe it's two per household or one per household. We'll figure that out.
Which is fine. I know one of the things that, and other.
And then we can finesse this thing.
Do you validate registrations? I know, obviously, that's not the best way to do it, but do you validate registrations when you register the cars, too?
Sure.
Um, in my case, I do own, oh, I don't own, but I have a company issued vehicle that is not registered to Virginia Avenue. So I know there could be, I might not be the only one. Maybe, I know some districts are pay for permit. Me personally, and I do appreciate the, to make them at a no cost as part of this pilot program. But it's gotten so bad that at this point, I don't mind paying for permit, just as long as I'm guaranteed that I will be able to park in the street that I live in at any given time. Now, at some point, six o'clock, yes, it sounds a little bit early, because we do see these individuals from that said dealership working really late at night, moving cars constantly.
Do they have, do they have assigned parking in your apartment complex? Do you?
We do, but some of us residents have more than one vehicle.
Okay, okay.
So it's.
An older, excuse me, it's an older apartment that has one space per unit, right?
Correct, that's why.
I would, I would suggest that you, you, you park, you use your parking, allotted parking space for your company vehicle.
We do, but then again, it goes to our personal vehicles. You know, I have a personal vehicle that, you know, I have two personal vehicles that, you know, we always use. I understand the thing for the, if it's a non-registered car to Virginia, that could easily be, I could park in our.
It's gonna be towed, basically, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Now, the other issue that was mentioned, as far as thirty minutes and marking the cars, obviously, that's a good indication. Now, if these people have at any given time thirty or forty cars on our street, they could easily be moving cars every thirty minutes. They have enough people that work for them that they could constantly be rotating all these vehicles, rotating their inventory. You know, I, I know it's hard for the city to track what cars belong to them, what cars don't belong to them, but it's worth noting that they do have the means to be rotating vehicles, and hopefully it's an issue to where they're just finding all these different loopholes in order to
Yeah, I understand your concern.
continue doing what they're doing.
Concerned, because sometimes you may have visitors, you know.
Right.
Those cars that be, registered on a Virginia address.
Right, and with that, we, again, we understand the whole, maybe issuing a few, uh, parking permits per either apartment or household, and I know that in the other parking districts, we could actually request temporary parking permits from the city
Right.
for a special event or whatever the case might be. Which, it's also, which is a good thing for us if we need to have additional people coming over or relatives. But if we're able to, I know in some districts, you're allowed, I believe, up to four parking permits per household, which are obviously for pay.
Yeah, you pay.
Right, which.
It's, it gets more expensive.
As more that you need.
The more cars you get permits for.
Right, and again, we, I truly, I speak for myself, I truly appreciate the fact that we're using this as a pilot program to, have no, to not pay for parking passes, but if, let's say, we could come to a resolution to where we get maybe the first one or the first two free, and if you need additional parking, then you can pay. Which, again, I can't speak for everybody on the block, but I, I would be okay with that.
I like that idea, actually.
Yeah.
If we can accommodate it.
We're gonna make it work. We're gonna make it work, and we don't know if it'll be phase one or phase two, or phase two and a half.
Because again, I, me personally, I don't mind paying, just as long as I'm guaranteed or be able to park in the street that I live in.
The, the way the resolution is written right now, are you okay with at least trying it for a couple of months and see how it works?
Yes, because anything right now
Is better.
is better than what we're dealing with right now.
All right.
So I hope this works, and obviously, I've personally been very vocal to public safety and to code enforcement, and we will continue to do so if we see that this isn't working, or how we could improve it.
Okay. Mr. Cuevas, approximately, I asked a question, approximately, how many addresses are there, you know, on, along Virginia, roughly?
Tech, technically, it's three apartment buildings, but it, obviously, there's apartment A, B, C, and D. I'll say there's at probably twenty, maybe more. I know the one apartment building that wraps around Palm has a couple of addresses. I'm not sure if that's considered a Palm address or a Virginia address, but I wanna say at least twenty, possibly twenty-five.
Okay.
And we're all, we've all been impacted. I've been speaking with everybody. Joel has been, has spoken to a number of us, and we're all in agreement that something needs to happen.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Mayor?
Yes, I'm.
Got a question for, got a question for Mr. Hawkman. Do we think the abuser of the situation, the dealership, is it the one on Lakewood around the corner off Artesia?
There's been some speculation that, uh, somebody else from Lakewood, like you're referring to, is also got involved in some of the cars, or maybe they're changing.
Those sprinters that he has, I know for a fact, are on, on one of those vacant lots.
Yeah, um, whether there's an agreement between them and the, the CarMax dealership, we don't know, but there's been some of that belief that we've got that going on, too.
We don't know exactly where those cars are coming from, though.
That's right, so this'll take care of wherever they're coming from if they don't belong, and they're looking to use it for storage purposes. That's what we're trying to get rid of.
Are the cars getting turned over at a, at a rate of, or are they just moving them from one space to the next?
Good question. Obviously, somebody's selling, but I don't know if others are just being shipped from, could be all, any number of places these cars are coming and going. All possible.
Would it be to our advantage to maybe tail somebody that drops a car off and, and see where they're going back with it?
Well, I couldn't report on that in public microphone, could I?
That can certainly be done, right?
It's been noted. It's been noted.
Yeah, I mean, if we haven't done that yet, I don't know why. But I mean, we'd like to see where the source is.
For the most part, I think it's moving, a lot of it is just moving around to keep them from being towed under the three-day, seventy-two hour, but there's probably, there's some inflow and outflow, I'm sure.
Gotcha.
Okay, very good. Good evening, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Marquesha Johnson, I'm also, I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
I'm also a resident of Virginia. And just before we came over to the meeting, there was a tow truck that pulled up dropping off cars. And this happens three to four times a week. I pull out because I leave later for work, and they'll pull into my parking spot. And I, I don't have time to sit there and argue with them because I have to be at work. But they will pull into whoever's vacant parking spot there is and park their cars temporarily until they find a spot. Just last night, I came home, because I come home at different hours, and I said, "Excuse me, can you back up so I can park?" They ignored me, act like they were deaf. This happens on a continual basis. So, it's like, we're all rushing to get home at a certain hour. It really doesn't help because they've already parked their cars. If you come out on a Thursday night, they're all gone. Friday morning, soon as Street Sweeper pass, you see them running out like, excuse me, but roaches to come and move the cars. It's ridiculous, and they're all coming from the car lot. And no matter how many times you ask them, "Excuse me, can I park here," or "This is mine," we're like double parking our cars just so that we can have somewhere to park. Personally, I've gotten two tickets already because of it. Because they're saying, "Well, you can't park here, but where else am I to park when I live there?" When we have someone that's on the corner that's running an illegal business, yet they're taking up all the parking spaces. And then on top of that, you see them in the parking lot of where State of Brothers is on the backside, they park every car there, take a picture of it, and then they move it back. Or someone hurry up and move another car. So, it's like a routine that they have going on, and it's been going on for far too long. It's to the point where I'm like, I'm telling people to move to the city of Bellflower because it's a beautiful city, I love it here. But it's almost like, is it even worth promoting the city if the city is not going to stand behind us? That's all I have to say.
Well, thank, thank you for coming, and I, I, I understand that it's a public street, but I, I kind of feel, feel your pain. It's more like your space being violated. Although you don't own that space, but you, you kind of feel that you live in the area, you can just be able to park.
But I do pay rent there.
So, I, I get it, and so, but please continue spreading the word about Bellflower, we'll, we'll fix this. And what do you think about the solution being proposed tonight?
I don't, I, I think it's a good step, but after six, it's gonna be like it always is. There's nowhere to park. If you go there, if you guys were to get up and go right now and try to park, good luck. You're going to be parked in the red or in front of a fire hydrant.
So, we, um, we use six P M. as the cut of time because we are assuming that the business is already closed after six, correct?
Not, not so much that, it's that two, two factors. One, we thought if the vehicles weren't there during the day, they, they've got to be somewhere else, and wherever they are, they wouldn't just move them from wherever they are to he, to this location after six P M. Now, they may, we'll have to find out. The other reason six and not something like eight P M. was simply to accommodate the potential residents on Palm who don't have a permit and would want to come home and have place to park on Virginia because it's a public street in their neighborhood. So, at six o'clock, they would be free to park there all night without a permit because it ends at six. If we wait till eight, then where do they park when they get home from work? So, it was a bit of a balancing act, and we picked six, just kind of as a...
Six means five-thirty, really.
Five-thirty, true.
Well, here's the issue with that. Even if you were to use that, the thing is, if they can fit all of those cars in the lot on a Thursday night and pull them out the very next morning, what do you think that they're gonna do at five-thirty before the rest of us get home from work? They're gonna rush out and park those cars there.
Little sooner.
So, it's almost like a catch twenty-two. We, I mean, yes, what you have in place is, it sounds good. However, it's still the issue with the lot.
Do you think that the time should be more like seven or eight then?
I don't necessarily think the time should change. I think that it should just be something that, that the parking permit should be enforced, at least from where our, um, from where the lot ends to the end of the street. Because if it's just in that particular area is residential, then of course, they can't park there. So, if they park anywhere from the lot to Artesia, then of course, that's public. They can have at it.
So, permit parking in front of all the residences and thirty-minute parking everywhere else?
Correct.
What do you think, Joel?
What we've done is restrict the whole street, so they can't park there at all more than thirty minutes anywhere on Virginia, which in our minds is more restrictive, I think, than against what their interest and what you're suggesting.
I think what she's saying is just permit parking from sign to sign or in front of the residences, and then the thirty-minute, minute sign everywhere else.
Oh, just, just preserve a narrow...
There's no overnight, they can sneak their car in front of a residence at five-thirty, and they're good till the next morning.
Exactly, and all they would do is move to the other side.
Yeah.
That's another, another alternative.
Twenty-four hours, it's, it's enforced.
Only in front of the residence is what I would like to see.
Exactly.
Yeah, we could easily, we could easily accommodate that on the fly if you guys decide.
But I get it, you want to, you want to, you know, towing is painful and, and will correct a problem instead of pushing it, so.
Yeah, well, tow, so if, what, what's gonna happen is the, the other part of the street will be clogged and, you know, we'll have to do our best with that, but the residences will have permit only, and there'll be some sort of guest permit system that we'll do. It would just be in front of their houses, it can be done. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah. We can do it.
Are you okay with that?
Perfectly fine.
Alright.
Thank you.
That was a question I was gonna ask, is why don't we just do a parking permit district?
Yeah.
We're calling it a zone just because it's not following the same rules as a district, but if the boundaries of the zone now just become in front of the residences, that's, that's something...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can jump in, you actually amended the parking restrictions and permit restrictions last year. So, the, the term specified area, for all intents and purposes, is a parking district that you've traditionally called it. It just allows the city council to go through the motions rather than have to wait for a petition from the residents. So, you're doing this on your own authority as opposed to having to wait for somebody. So, the, the traditional method of calling this a parking district, it's the same thing as the specified area. And if you read the resolution, you'll see that you're delegating authority to the city manager to make a determination what works best. So, what you're discussing tonight is something that would be within his authority to do, even if you just adopted the resolution verbatim tonight.
Okay. The other question I have, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, is, so if I'm hearing correctly tonight, that, is that business license to operate the car?
No. And code is working on that, property owners and the whole thing. It's just a longer process than what, we want to deal with it sooner than later, and we, you know, it's been a while, so we need to get on it.
That's a separate, that's a separate track.
Separate issue, separate, separate track.
And, but that, that, I, that's good to know, I mean, if it's taken a while, I mean, if you're running into challenges or obstacles, you know, if you need us as a council to empower you to do something, let us know. I think it's, that's the root of the problem, right? And if they're not licensed, it...
Yeah, yeah, that's the reason, that's the reason we're doing what we're doing on the streets. Code enforcement is working on business and, and not even a business, really, they're more rogue than, than a business at this point.
Or if the cars are coming from Lakewood.
And this is the...
Let me just say that it seems like they're crying for help, and it appears that the holdup here in terms of implementation are the signs, correct?
Yes, it would need to be posted and...
So, how soon can, can we expedite getting the signs, Mr. Stewart?
They're probably in stock.
Okay, Mr. Greg is here.
I believe we've been putting up permit parking.
If we're doing, which sounds like it's gonna be parking permit signs, zone to zone, it's a custom sign, those are typically four to six weeks when we order them.
Four to six weeks?
Four to six weeks from, if I place the order tomorrow, we probably have them anywhere in four, four to six weeks.
Is there a way we can expedite that?
I, I'd be more than happy, it sounds like it's needed, so I'll be more than happy to, to ask, but typically...
It seems like they're, they're crying for help.
With custom signs, it's, there's a longer lead time to, to get them.
Parking permit sign is a custom sign?
Yeah, correct, because you're usually, you're doing directional arrows on them. Um, you, if I have them in stock...
The arrows are only left...
If I have them in stock, I'll, I'll put them up tomorrow.
The way we, way parking permit district's been going up, I thought we'd have them in stock.
And then the thirty-minute parking is that standard, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Those are just standard, I mean...
See what you can do to expedite this.
As quick as I can get my hands on them, we'll, we will have them installed.
I'm sure that our residents will, will appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
And the direction was just in front of the residences, that's what we're hearing, that's what I'm hearing?
Well, the permit, for the permit parking. No thirty-minute parking allowed in the, the residence side, in front of all the apartments and the houses.
Well, I, I'd like to hear other, other residents too, before we make a final decision.
I'd like to just add a couple items to it. I think what's going on here is, is a good way to go. But like the gentleman that drives his vehicle, company vehicle, afraid of getting a ticket, if there's a company name on that vehicle, I wouldn't see ticketing it. Because if the car dealer, he ain't gonna put a damn name on that.
He'd have a permit for it.
That would, that would let you know that it's a company vehicle, so, so if the guy's got two vehicles on the property and he's got to park that truck in the street, and there's a name on it...
Let me help here, even the company vehicle gets a permit.
Sure.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
Okay, so then it's fixed, yeah.
And the rest of it, I'd see tow them. The only way they're gonna learn is when you tow. When you hit the pocketbook, that's when it, they all jump up. So, and this is, it's a good start for that area of town, but you got major problems on parking all over this town. They need to be addressed too. And especially with some of these apartment buildings that were put up with government money, and it's supposed to be for elderly, and you haven't got elderly living in there. And it was overdone with one vehicle per, per unit. Now, there's two and three vehicles. So, you need to watch where you're going with it, and then on the signs, I, if I, I recall correctly, Bellflower had to remove a whole bunch of signs years ago because they weren't approved by the state. It's the lettering size and everything about it. So, you may want to look into that before you put a sign up and somebody challenges it.
Okay, anyone else? Any other residents of Virginia or Palm Street? Alright, we're good. Alright, so...
Mayor, I'd like to...
Yes, Councilmember Dun...
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number nineteen thirty-six as discussed.
Second. Alright, can we clarify as discussed, any other changes, so at least we know we're giving clear directions?
Permit parking only allowed in front of the actual residential properties.
And all the rest will be thirty-minute parking?
One, two, three, or whatever.
And all the rest of Virginia will be thirty-minute?
Thirty-minute, yes.
Twenty-four, implement twenty-four hours?
Do we need to, I think this is a, a broad item that gives public safety authority to kind of tweak it a little bit, is what we were told. And do we need to... Artesia Boulevard, the north side? You know, there's something spills out on Artesia, like you're already talking Palm?
I'd say we start with what we got, because...
And then you have the authority to grow it to another, to Artesia around the corner a little bit?
Sure, and Artesia involves other business operators and different...
I think he can on his own.
Yeah, okay. Mayor Protim Garza?
Yeah.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Um, what do you think is the good timeframe for us to evaluate this? Make sure it's effective, so that at least we can let them know that within X number of days, uh, you'll make an, you'll give us an update, so we can invite them?
I, I would think a few months to, to see what the changes...
It's a good app?
Ninety days.
It sounds like ninety days is a good amount.
So, in three months, we'll be making an update, so you're always welcome to come and attend this meeting? So, at least we know what's going on.
We'll be in communication with, we got twenty residents or twenty addresses. We're gonna be in communication with these folks, and they haven't been shy about getting in communication with us, so that friendship's only gonna deepen.
Okay, good. Alright, there's a motion in a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Mayor Santanas?
Aye. Okay, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any recusals? Does anyone want to pull any item for separate vote or discussion?
If there's none of that going on, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I just pull item fourteen G, just for clarification.
And I believe fourteen K has a, some amendments, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
That's proposed, okay.
Okay. Fourteen K. Mr. Hawkman, since there are no other items to be pulled, can you talk about fourteen G? Again, we're talking about parking, continuation of parking discussion. So, how do you, how do you intend this to be implemented?
Well, what we've got here basically is just trying to put all of our city parking lots into one resolution. So, as we look to make changes, we know right where to go, and it'll be a consistent document that'll keep that all together. The other part that goes with it is our downtown parking. As you know, it's becoming more of a challenge than it's been in, in many years, which is a good thing. And when we have to make tweaks, adjustments to the downtown area, we just figured we could do it all with this resolution. So, everything is a kind of a cleanup, put it all in one place, that's part A. The other part to this is implementing a few recommended changes. We're gonna start to regulate, no overnight parking in our three main parks, parking lots. At the request of Parks and Rec, um, we're gonna be enforcing, so you can't park there overnight in Sims, Carruthers, and Thompson. We've also got some, some tweaking downtown as it relates to when Steelcraft opens and some fine tuning there that we're proposing in terms of red curbs, green curbs, yellow zone, that's been worked out and recommended. Um, and then you can see some of these other parking lots where we don't allow it overnight on Wednesdays because we street sweep and some other things, those are all coming onboard to make all of it consistent. So, that's kind of part three is make consistency with some of these regulations. And we think this is a good start to that. The one parking lot that's not being addressed yet, which may be, is behind the Elks and the Event Center. We felt like it's prudent to wait until Steelcraft gets open and settled, and the parking structure potentially gets open to see where we land for the long haul or medium haul, at least, before looking at maybe another adjustment in terms of that parking lot behind the main. But that's just our recommendation for now.
Okay, on, on the, on the parking lots that you mentioned that are owned by the city, uh, there are existing signage about restricted parking, right? To our parking things like that.
Everything that we're proposing would have to have a signage that would describe same.
And right now, those, those are not being enforced?
They are being enforced, other than the ones that we're proposing that are not yet approved. Um, I think there's one on there, Walnut Street, we're enforcing because the city manager has the authority to implement those regulations. And that went in some weeks ago on Walnut Street parking lot. But for instance, main, uh, the, the three main parks, we're not enforcing that yet until we get approval here, and then signs and so on.
How about Palm Street Park?
Palm Street, we've been, uh, we've been enforcing as it relates to some overnight because there's supposed to be nobody in there after hours and so on, so we have done some of that.
There's still cars there at night.
Sometimes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Now, you mentioned about the downtown parking. Uh, right now, there are signage that is limited, limit the parking to two hours.
In the parking lots and on the street?
No, 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 um, along the Boulevard.
That's correct.
Are those being enforced?
Sometimes, not very often. The reason is, we, we, people that get tickets don't think so, but we believe we do provide a service. And right now, or historically, the service has been to deal with the downtown mostly based on complaints. People that were parking in front of businesses for too long often were maybe a, a business owner from down the street, and they would take up somebody else's customer parking. And so, then when we get a complaint from that offended business, we would go and enforce. Absent complaints, what we found is when we would just go out and arbitrarily start enforcing the two-hour on the street, uh, we would create more hardship than we were helping. That being said, that was then, this is now, Steelcraft opening, we might have to adjust that and tweak it and find out that we need to enforce it regularly. Uh, maybe we need to issue a few warnings to offenders on the street downtown and then get to enforcement. We're open to the change, it's just we can, wanted to kind of see where we, where things go.
So, if you recall, how many tickets have been issued, um, along, along the Boulevard, is in the last year or last six months?
All I could say is a few. I wouldn't, I don't have a number. I did check, uh, um, parking lots, and I don't know if I have that number in front of me. Something like sixty in the last few months or so, I can't remember the exact time or the exact number. But parking lots in the downtown had a number of tickets because there was increased attention based on, um, businesses complaining and turnover not being what it should be. And so, we had to address that more aggressively. Again, sometimes, so, some of what we do is follow complaints, uh, because there's more city than we can, than we can enforce perfectly. And so, as needs change, complaints build, we have to adjust our deployments and time schedules to con... And so as needs change, complaints build, we have to adjust our deployments and time schedules to accommodate that. And we're prepared to do that in the downtown on the streets if needed.
Well, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good thing to happen because the more business we attract to downtown Bellflower, I, I think we expect a lot more customers coming into Bellflower. So there's gonna be more, um, pressure on parking space. So I think we need to start enforcing that. Uh, and uh, it's something that we need to address with the merchants along downtown. Two hours, that's sufficient, uh, for them, for a customer to conduct business. That's something we need to start doing. Because I, one, one thing that I, I, I kinda noticed is it's unfair to those, um, uh, vehicle owners who were given citation because somebody complained about it. Seems like that's what you said earlier. The trigger was somebody's complaining that, um, a vehicle is parked in front of their business and worked for more than two hours. So, um, they call code enforcement and a ticket is being issued. Uh, in other cases, when there's no complaint, then a vehicle could be parked for more than two hours and nobody, nobody even pays, pays attention to it.
It's a, I would suggest it's more about we have to prioritize our deployment. We can't do everything all the time well, perfectly. So, a, a percentage of what we do is follow the complaints. A percentage of what we do is meat and potatoes. And, uh, in the case of the downtown, it's been more complaint driven. If it needs to become part of the meat and potato, uh, portion, then we'll deal with that.
Well, I'm just kinda thinking because again, based on, based on the number of businesses coming to downtown Bellflower.
Sure, yeah, good chance.
Especially with Steelcraft coming in, I can just imagine, having experienced, uh, Steelcraft in Long Beach, there's a lot of, um, needs for parking.
That'd be great.
Something we need to, well, it's a good problem to have, but.
You bet.
I know there's gonna be some kind of negative, some, some kind of pushback if somebody gets a ticket. But as long as we are implementing the, the, the ordinance consistently, I, I have no problem with it.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, is there a motion?
Mayor, I got something on that.
Go ahead.
Forgot about it.
On fourteen G?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're still gonna have the seventy-two hour parking towed after seventy-two hours on the, those parking lots?
Correct, that's currently the rules.
That's currently the rules.
And so we're encouraging people and you've seen the signs downtown, hey, park over here, park over here, for instance, on the, uh, west side of Bellflower Boulevard where it isn't two hour. Um, and there's a number of, of vehicles that are there overnight and, um, they're not on there Wednesdays because it's, it's cleaning. Um, and if that's something that needs to change in the future, that's a big kettle. Lot of interested parties and various surrounding those lots and so on.
Why would somebody be, need to be parked in a city parking lot for three days? Well, I know, it's, that's why we have a parking problem some and that's what we're trying to address.
Yeah.
I'm thinking we need to address the seventy-two hour unless I can get, somebody can tell me why not.
Well, the, 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 the storage of the vehicles is mostly or somewhat by the businesses there that might have some delivery and some other vehicles. They come into work four in the morning and sometimes some cases. So it's a lot of commercial, business owners.
Vehicle coming in four in the morning is not parked for seventy-two hours.
No, long story short, there's been an understanding between Ozana, Johnny Rebs, and a couple others there. They park vehicles there and leave them there overnight and they leave there pretty consistently. If we are going to change that rule set, and I think we have an obligation to meet with them and let them know the rules are gonna change, we're gonna force seventy-two hours. But up until this time, we really haven't had a need to. If it's gonna change the direction of the council, then let's move forward and do it. I actually am supportive of that. I think we should.
I do, I'd like to weigh in on my colleagues. Now's the time to do it. I don't wanna print a bunch of signs because we've been printing a lot of signs lately and, and we keep changing them.
And I'm just kind of curious, why is there a need for a car to be parked for seventy-two hours?
That's my, that's my.
Because the, 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 at least the three entities that I mentioned just then store vehicles there and have for some time. And it's always been a source of consternation. But it's been, it's been a long understanding for, since way before I got here and.
We have.
I, 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 I don't know. I think we need to change that.
Could we change it tonight if the council agrees? I mean, I.
Are you okay with that? I mean, seventy-two hours is for a public parking lot.
Right, but I think that we need to inform those that are, that have not.
Of course.
Are aware of these things.
Well, it's gonna take, it's gonna take thirty days anyway for it to go into effect, right?
Right. There are, yeah, it would take thirty days to go into effect. And there will be, and we will notify them. I will say that there are those in that group that will not suffer in silence. So we will likely hear about it. But I think that I'm, again, it's one of those things that's, I've noticed this for some time now and there are a number of people taking advantage of the fact we don't have restrictions back there.
And we have those on the east side as well, Cellos and different things.
We're only talking about the east side and it's.
Uh, I'm pardon, I was, thought we're on the west side right now, are we? Yeah.
Yeah.
So the east side also has.
East side, that's what I'm, yeah.
Both, both sides have some overnight, yep. So it's a big kettle.
Because, yeah, we, we don't have anything on here about the, the west side, do we?
No.
I'm only reading east side.
What I'm gonna say is if we go to the west side and we start to enforce the overnight surveillance, there's going to be requests for permits on that. Is that something we want to entertain or not? Or is that something we take a later date or?
Request for what?
For permits for overnight parking in that lot.
On, on, on a temporary basis, you know, on a sneated basis, I'm okay with it. Just like, just like the parking permit, they have visitors? We allow parking overnight?
I'm just saying that there will be some righteous and noisy objection to this policy if we go forward with this tonight.
My second is, oh.
Yeah. I mean, I've, I've known, I've, I've, I've known them long enough. I've had enough run-ins with them. We've had, we've tried to enforce that lot in the past. And I would suspect that it's not gonna be as easy as just ruling. You're gonna, there'll be people here.
Let's just dive into it.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm all in. I'm just giving you the fair warning.
You need to explain that, um, we are suffering from a parking issue right now.
Fair enough.
And it's gonna be worse.
I will happily so.
You can't throw the baby out with the bathwater here. We've gotta try to be sensitive to the merchants that are as well.
Right, exactly.
I think that Hambones has got a, no, not Hambones, Johnny Rebs.
Got a trailer bin there, I can't, I can't see a move.
Oh, yeah. They also have two other locations and they own the locations of both areas and certainly have the ability to store those trailers.
I see a van there. I see their, uh, mobile, uh, unit there for barbecue.
They're the ones I'm worried about the least of the group that I mentioned.
Now, let's consider, uh, Cellos. He's got three commercial vehicles that I think are rule state. You can't mar, uh, park a commercial vehicle on the city streets anytime. Is that right? And you can do it sometime?
Some, some subject to restrictions based on the size and the weight of the vehicle, correct?
Right, there's, and plus if they're in the business of doing something, you know, which they would be during the day, but overnight, um, yeah, they're in the alley, so that's kinda.
I think those are on the city parking lots, right? Sometime?
Sometimes in the lot, sometimes in the alley.
Block's the alley.
They're in the alley, blocking the alley.
So we're gonna subject him to this concern as well.
Everybody, I would say everybody gets subjected. That's how I feel about it.
Alright, but I, I'm just trying to analyze the trucks and cars that I see and how it'll impact.
And you're saying both sides, east and west of the Boulevard?
And I would say no overnight parking. Seven days a week.
Well, I don't know. I'm, I think that.
I wanna, I wanna let my colleagues feel if they wanna negotiate.
No, I get what you're trying to free up parking, but I don't know if we wanna offend all our merchants in the process.
Well, what, what, what really bothered me, the seventy-two hour parking, I think real.
Yeah, it bothers me a lot.
Yeah, I mean.
Can you make a twenty-four hour then?
That to me is unacceptable.
It's unacceptable, it's been unacceptable.
That, that's too much.
That means somebody could live in their car in those parking lots for seventy-two hours.
But remember historically, you remember when we had Mister Schnabler up here and he was concerned about those vehicles on the wall?
Ouch.
If you remember, don't cringe, Joel.
I'm fighting it. That's smarts.
And because they had spider web growing beneath them, that kinda stuff. Now I get it, that, they don't move. They were there all the time. I expect that's not the case anymore. That those, we have more movement on that. Or do you see cars there or not moving at all?
I think there's some public safety cars that don't move for a little bit.
Alright, public safety, but I'm talking about the, that wall behind Bo's.
Yeah, I don't see no, nothing like before.
Southwest Patrol does keep theirs, the vehicles in our lot overnight and overtime.
You know, we might free up six or eight parking spaces, but at what cost? To those that are supporting the town? That's my concern.
Should we modify it to overnight parking for merchants in Bellflower?
I don't think the parking lots are designed to have those big trucks in it overnight. That's the intent. You have a business, you should have a place to park them or buy more real estate.
Could also be a phase two, as we've talked about a number of times, the whole downtown's gonna keep changing and it could be something that gets on the next round.
If you do this, it's never gonna be easy. There's no good talk.
Get it over with.
And if you.
But they need to do something.
Yeah, well, it depends on how you view it. Um, I think that it is being exploited a little bit by some folks downtown.
Let's start, Mayor. There's two issues here. The, the commercial business overnight parking, then the length of time you can park there. Let's start with the easier one. Are we gonna allow overnight parking and if we do, how long? I feel seventy-two hours is unacceptable.
Oh, that, to me too. I mean, that's too long.
Anybody else wanna weigh in?
Are you okay with that?
I agree.
Yeah, no, I mean.
What is acceptable then? I mean, we can just.
I think a lot of those cars are from the rentals that are in the neighborhood. People use that lot.
I think so too.
As their auxiliary parking.
True, but they're, it's, this is the irony of this. They may, they do, but it's generally overnight parking when the lot's not being used. When the lot is being used, they're not the ones plugging up the lot. When the lot's used in the peak business hours, the vehicles that are plugging up the lot are those that are being stored by the merchants and other uses along the Boulevard. So, it, it is a little bit of a catch twenty-two.
Oh, but what that said, you know, maybe they're out, we can allow overnight parking, but not to the length of, you know, over twenty-four hours. That means that vehicle hasn't moved in twenty-four hours. Unless they move it to, you know, unless the game comes on again and you move it to the next space.
So, so basically they, they, they can park overnight?
I'm, I'm just throwing out ideas unless I have some support.
Well, I'm kinda sensitive to Mister Coops because we have merchants here who might need overnight parking.
A twenty-four hour limit?
I want to, I want to support them.
Changing from seventy-two to twenty-four?
Twenty-four hours, fine.
Okay, I would be.
I'm okay with twenty-four.
I'm okay with that.
But I, I'm just, I'm just crushed with seventy-two hours. I didn't, I didn't know that we allowed them to park for seventy-two hours.
Yeah, the last signs we printed, that's what they say.
And seventy-two hours was simply the amount of time that we can tow legally out of a, off a street or a parking lot if it doesn't move. That's why it was seventy-two hours. It gave us the ability to tow from a parking lot. It had to be named because it's, wasn't implicit in the code that parking lots were included in, with streets, public streets. So that's why we named it specifically also in the parking lots.
Okay. Mayor Protim Garza?
I, I.
You've been very quiet.
I, I'm listening, learning, but I I'm conflicted because I, I see Mister Coops' point, but at the same time, I when you're a merchant, you come, I the parking is for customers. I, I, you should know that if you have a business, there's not, no implied guaranteed parking for larger vehicles. That's not what these parking lots were designed for. And I think the fact that we've conditioned them, we've kinda gotten ourselves in this spot, right? So I, I see, I'm with Mister Dent in terms of it's gonna be painful either way. I think, uh, the grace period could be that we phases in over, not phases in, just give ninety days for them to find alternate parking arrangements for their vehicles. But the expectation that somehow they have a right to park their large commercial vehicles in our public parking lots is, is unfair. So, I just, so. I'm ready to go if you wanna go full time, but I.
Dan, did you say Cellos has three trucks?
Yes.
So where are the three trucks? I only see the one.
Well, it's usually parked over there by the phone building. You know, if you go up Oak Street and there's.
Behind it?
Along the side.
I never saw three trucks at once. I only seen one at once.
No, but he, he's got three.
So he's parking them somewhere.
Right. And part of the problem is, and I, I totally agree with, it, it's more than parking. It's about remember when we suddenly had a real estate office on Bellflower Boulevard that generated a whole bunch more parking at once was the, uh.
Yldes.
Exactly. And right, and so we're, that was like our number one prerogative. What are we gonna do here? Try to get this straightened out? Went to, uh, valet parking and permits and everything else because forty, fifty cars suddenly showed up the next day after they opened up with all the agents trying to do business there. And we're thinking, alright, why did we allow a business like that to go on the Boulevard? Now, when we look at our code, we have places for different kinds of businesses. Now, the codes indicates you can have a place like Cellos or an appliance store and a furniture store, any of these stores that allow for you to have larger vehicles to be part of your operation. Now, when the guys filled the stores up with appliances or furniture, uh, restaurant supplies, they never planned, I don't think, to be able to park their trucks off-site and then bring them to work each day so that they could load them up. I think that they've always just expected the trucks would be ready to be loaded in the morning off the city lot. So we have to change their whole mindset of how we do bus, how they will do business in the future. Because there's not gonna be a vehicle out there for them to load based on what we're thinking about changing. That's the concern I have. Now, how many, when Lifeguard Ministries, they don't tell you have two or three trucks that usually are involved with food distribution or my dreaming?
Oh, they do, yeah.
Alright, so they're gonna have to find a place for them to go as well, correct?
Correct.
So.
There's an apartment as well, um, apartment with a resident there that parks in the lot because she lives there.
But, um, I don't know, it, I don't disagree with the concept, but I think that we gotta let them down easy.
Well, I, I mean, we need to keep this in mind. The trucks, the vehicles parked there overnight are not really, that's not when the, that's the problem. They're parked there overnight, so be it. They're parked there overnight. Where they're problematic is when they stay there all day. And that's when those vehicles being stored there are problematic. Ironically, on the flip side, when the residents are storing vehicles there overnight, then it becomes a problem because sometimes they stay all day and all night. So I think there is, there needs to be, in all fairness, I think we need to look at this and come back with a clarification because we need to look at how we're gonna address these vehicles, how people store them. I mean, do we really care if the businesses store their vehicles with which they do business every day in the lot overnight? I'm not sure we do. Do we care if they leave them there during the day? Yeah, we probably do care about that because that was never the implication. Those vehicles are gonna be parked there all day during business hours. And several of those vehicles are parked there. So I think we need to come back with a plan to differentiate how we enforce those vehicles. And, and to, and to become clear minded in how we're gonna enforce the overnight restrictions. Do we just wanna, does it really matter whether a car is parked in the parking lot at night when the businesses aren't in business? Yeah, probably not.
How late Steelcraft gonna be open?
They'll be open at ten o'clock, I believe.
Alright, so if I park my truck there and I get off work at six o'clock and sit there all night.
That's a problem.
I've sucked up some of the parking.
But that's a problem. That's my point. It's a problem when they're parked there during business hours. So maybe the issue is a restriction and we've been through this a thousand times and, and we keep going back to the same thing. Maybe it's a ten, ten P M to six A M restriction or something like that. For the, for those trucks being parked there. I, I mean, before, after ten o'clock, they're fine. Before ten o'clock, not so.
You allow them to park from ten to six, ten P M to six A M.
Yeah. I mean, I, again, I think my theory is if we rush to judgment and do this now, we'll do it wrong and we're gonna have a bigger problem to unravel later.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of.
And I'd rather, and given the way this has come about and the number of concerns that are being expressed, they're not the same concerns. They're multiple concerns. And I think we need to come back with probably a bifurcated plan how we're gonna address this. Rather than just do a blanket restriction now, I think that we will rue the day that happens. You're gonna have some really upset people that you really don't wanna be fighting with.
Mister Mayor, can I propose that staff go back and assess this and come up with a plan and?
So you wanna pull the item?
Oh, yeah. Because you gotta order signs.
Yeah, we gotta order signs and, and I wanna, I wanna look at this again because I don't think I'm, and, and I don't necessarily wanna say it tonight. So I, I don't think Joel's necessarily understanding exactly where I'm coming from on this, nor are you and.
Well, I, I don't mind delaying it as long as we do it right.
We need to.
That's the point. I wanna do it right. And I think there is a way to do it, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm sure they will, yes.
But we're.
Yeah, Mister, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, but, but there would be interest in, in passing the resolution tonight and just simply dealing with that in the future because we've gotta get going on some Steelcraft changes and.
You're passing the resolution with direction for the staff to come back to resolve the overnight parking issues in all lots in the city.
Okay, okay. I, I'm, I'm good with it.
Do you wanna fix the overnight part seventy-two hour right now?
I think that's part of the, maybe the.
Resolution allows for seventy-two hour parking.
I'd like to fix it now.
I'd like to fix it now. If we're gonna pass something, let's just do that and then when that one's done.
And we can handle the rest in terms of overnight parking for trucks?
Seventy hours shouldn't be a problem. If there's seventy-two hours unmoved, that's, that's not the biggest problem we have.
Okay. Councilmember Hamada, are you okay with that?
Well, yeah, uh, but, but again, for the big picture of this all, I, I, I would agree with a further study on this. I think we're jumping in a lot of, we've been tossing out some ideas and, uh, I think it's getting a little jumbled, but I think, uh, yeah, to sit down with key players out there.
Yeah, I'm a gambling guy and if we do this, if we want to jump in and do this, I have a hunch we'll be redoing it in thirty days.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, that's why I, I'd go along with, with, you know, again, studying this further, but for now, yeah, with the seventy-two hour, yeah.
Not being allowed for seventy-two hours.
Yeah, yeah, I'd go along with that. That's just like the streets.
So what, if it's not seventy-two, how many hours is it gonna be? Twenty-four? Did we say another replacement amount?
Yeah, it's sunny, sunny proposed twenty-four.
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 Twenty-four, okay. So, so we'll agree to twenty, seventy-two goes away, seven twenty-four will be the new standard.
Vehicles over twenty-four hours get towed.
Um.
No?
Hey, but I, you're gonna have some unhappy people.
Just approve what we looked at here and let the staff work on the rest a little bit?
Alright.
So what you're suggesting is keep the seventy. So what you're suggesting is keep the seventy-two for now?
There'll be some enforcement logistics, when do we start the clock on a car that shows up at ten PM if we're not working at ten PM, and sometimes we are, but, uh, we can, we can talk about it.
Seventy-two hour car, you'd easily know, you'd probably no, notice that after five days, that hadn't moved, you know, it really, it's, you know, you don't notice it right then. A car that's been there two days, you go, okay, now we better watch the clock.
Don't think that problem is as prevalent as you think it is, with the exception of the cars that, that the, the tenants there believe they have a permanent right to park. And that's, I think, when they understand there's no permanent right to park, we'll deal with the consequences there, but I think that this issue is not gonna be a huge issue.
Well, it's gonna be changing mindset.
Well, they're already moving for street sweeper.
Okay, so, are you okay with, are you okay with us to keep it the way this is for now, and then we'll address it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to add just one thing, as you're gonna revamp this down the road later on, to take into the picture that all these properties here, nothing's addressed about the grandfather and end deal. If the property's sold, you should be looking at the parking for that facility, cause nobody's ever done this, the amount of parking allowed. And that, that has to be done, uh, that has to be done in conjunction with what you're gonna do down the road to eliminate a lot of problems, and you know it's there. Because if I buy a little building like Cellos, and I have, um, ten employees, they're gonna park all over that place. Now Cellos would have to come into the real estate person and say, hey, am I allowed, how many vehicles am I allowed to park there? Now you need to look at that too, but you're on the right track, the apartments that are ones taking up the property back there, and analyze the business guy, it's kinda rough to do.
Okay, we'll look into that, alright, thank you, alright, any other?
Make a motion to adopt the consent calendar, well, then we had, we had another item that you wanted to look at, right?
Juan had one.
Uh, I, I didn't pull it, I just wanted to put on the record that there was an amendment made to.
There was an amendment on the item K?
Yeah, so to, for that to be considered the amended version.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember, Mayor Protem Garza to approve the consent calendar, roll call please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye, uh, before we go into council reports, um, I was notified that, um, we have the wonderful students here from Bellflower High School to receive the proclamation on the Asian American Pacific Heritage Month. Uh, they were, just for the record, they were kind of late because they were getting ready for the, uh, the final exams, and that's a very good reason.
They were on time, I just didn't know they were coming.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, they were on time, so I'd like to invite my council, panel of council members, uh, to the riser. Alright, how are you doing, thank you so much for coming.
Finals tomorrow?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
When's the graduation?
Thank you so much. Well, I'd like to, uh, oh wow, we have a good microphone system now, wonderful, wow, this is the first time. And, and by the way, I wanna thank you personally, because, uh, you almost broke the record tonight, because every time we have a proclamation, there's always someone need to receive the proclamation. Okay, but since you showed up, that record still stays, alright? So we always have someone receiving the proclamation, and I just want to repeat the, the highlight of this proclamation, it's a long proclamation, and I know that, um, Councilmember Coops would like me to read the whole thing, but I, I will, I will. I will refrain from doing that, so, the City of Bellflower proclaims Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and there's the highlights here, whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country, state, and city, achieving success in all aspects of society, including business, medicine, education, politics, science, and the arts. So now therefore I, Sunny Arantaines, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim May two thousand nineteen as Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. Uh, signed by Mayor Sunny Arantaines, Mayor Protem Juan Garza, Councilmember Ray Dunn, Councilmember Raymond H.Y. Hamada, and Councilmember Dan Coops. So, I'd like to make this presentation to you. So would you like to say something? Okay, there you go, alright.
Encourage your kids to join Filipino club.
And can you tell us your names?
My name is Martha Fernandez.
My name is Timo Rosas.
Uh, my name's Ethan, I'm a mosquito, and not all of us were able to show up, but we all like, we all would've wanted to be here.
Alright, very good, again, thank you so much for saving us to keep our record, okay, thank you.
It doesn't reflect well on the mayor.
What?
You know.
Yeah, you know, you're late.
Connection here, I wanted to make sure.
Okay, alright, thank you again for coming to this meeting, alright, uh, council reports, uh, Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a few things, um, let's see, a couple, uh, Wednesdays ago, I did attend, uh, the Neighborhood Watch, uh, sort of, uh, sort of educational session held by staff, and we had, we had about ten people in the audience, and, uh, what we're looking for, and I think it's been mentioned before during announcements at some point, we are trying to start new Neighborhood Watch, uh, you know, areas, so we'd love to see the entire city covered, and that's what I, that's my, one of my, my things is to, you know, make sure that there's some more, you know, eyes and ears out there, but also, it's, it's a great opportunity to, for neighbors to know neighbors, and that's, that's, I think, is the point to stress, and so once we know each other, once we're gonna watch each other's back, and then we're gonna help out public safety, you know, where we can, so. Uh, it, it was a great educational session by staff, we were just, again, get an overview of the services and, and, and what it takes to be a, a Neighborhood Watch captain. So, uh, again, um, if, if you're interested out there, uh, please, uh, contact, uh, let's see, Sacramento, uh, look at Ramos, uh, the Public Safety Department, and, uh, we can get going with that, uh, because we also have areas that, uh, more spots you can meet at, uh. We, we have some, again, public sites you can meet at, we've been talking to some churches that are, again, opening up their doors so that you can, uh, have meeting areas, so. Uh, that's, uh, just a great opportunity for everybody, uh, I did have a chance recently to, to, uh, to attend a couple of the senior award nights, and, uh, Bellflower High School again, uh, and also, um, Somerset High School. So, uh, again, congratulations to the seniors and the graduates, uh, we're looking forward to their, uh, their next, uh, next stage of life, uh, so. Yeah, you know, congratulations again there, and, uh, my last thing is I, um, wanted, well, I, I did attend the volunteer recognition, as I mentioned during announcements, and again, uh, ninety, ninety-plus volunteers and like organizations, uh, and then I heard that ten thousand, you know, hours, so it, uh, I wanna thank all the volunteers out there, they've, they've really put in a lot of time, and, uh, definitely have, you know, saved this community a lot of, uh, money too, so. Uh, and the last thing, I, just a personal shout-out to a, um, a young graduate, uh, named Michael Cole, he's a resident here in town, and, and he graduated from Cal State Fullerton. Uh, you know, he's, uh, lived a challenged life, so I just wanted to give him a shout-out and, you know, congratulations, uh, for, you know, making it through Cal State Fullerton. So, uh, it was a long haul, but, uh, he did it, so, again, congratulations, Michael, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada, uh, Councilmember Coops.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Dutton.
I would like to, to have this meeting adjourned in the honor of, uh, James Melvin Hop, uh, known as Jim Hop. Was born, uh, August eleventh, nineteen thirty-three, and passed away on May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen at the age of eighty-five. He was raised in Fresno, California, attended elementary school through college there, shortly after leaving Fresno, his honorable service to his country in the US Navy. Upon his term of service ending, Jim became a transportation manager, which in the position he held for most of his career. Jim married, uh, to the love of his life, uh, Joyce, on July seventeenth, nineteen seventy-six, they loved motorhoming, visiting various campgrounds, and their boat in Mission Bay, San Diego, he was very active in the community, and a member of the Lakewood Long Beach Elks since nineteen sixty-six, the Compton Fishing and Hunting Club since nineteen seventy-six, and also several Family Motor Coach Association chapters, including Southern California Elks, Southwestern Bus Nuts, and Beat the Odds chapters, and that's like all motorhome stuff. Uh, Jim was very instrumental in merging the Long Beach Elks to the Bellflower Elks that's, exists today here downtown. He was a devoted husband and father and grandfather, he is survived by his wife Joyce, three daughters, one son, and many grandchildren. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt consolations go out to Joyce and the entire Hop family, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn, uh, Mayor Protem Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'll try to make these quick, uh, staff and I, um, including our mayor, actually have been having meetings with Metro recently regarding the upcoming light rail line. Uh, that thing is moving along pretty quickly now, um, it's gonna start gaining speed, uh, planning-wise, and we should start seeing construction, if all goes well, within the next, probably the next two years. So, um, stay tuned on that, uh, the second thing is, uh, I think most of my colleagues, except for mayor, um, we attended the California Contract City Association Annual Seminar out in Indian Wells a week and a half ago, and, um, it was a really good, uh, really good event. Um, I was able to participate on the homelessness panel on that, um, on, in that, that event. Related to contract cities, um, just to show how much of a difference really, like, we have, like, how much power we do individually have. We, as contract cities, just got a, a big decision made by the California Public Entire, Public Employee Retirement System, which is PERS. Uh, and there was a big decision that we're gonna be making next month, and due to the advocacy of numerous people in contract cities, our city and myself, uh, we were to get, able to get that decision overturned, which is really big, it's gonna give the city flexibility in a lot of ways that it handles its business. Um, and so that's a big decision, big victory for us, and again, it just goes to show that, um, Bellflower, one city out of, out of over four hundred cities in our state, um, can make a difference, so. Related to that, um, at our last meeting, I spoke about SB fifty, the Senate bill that would have completely transformed a lot of the residential areas that we have within our city, within every city in the state, and that was a huge victory for us cities to be able to temporarily kill that bill. Um, you may have, if you look up SB fifty in any online search engine, you'll find that there's a ton of stories, it was a big divisive issue, and you should know that Bellflower was absolutely at the forefront of that effort, um, in fact, there was an op-ed that was published online, um, and was published in newspapers that I wrote. Um, that gave us a lot of visibility in this effort, so I absolutely wanna thank our staff and my colleagues for, for entrusting me with that. Um, the same thing happened with SB seven thirty-two, which is a, uh, an air quality management district sales tax that was gonna be enacted upon all of us. Uh, we're not against air quality, against clean air, right, all of us want clean air, it's just, uh, the way that AQMD was going about this business was not the right way. So that bill is also, uh, temporarily dead as well, and, um, I do wanna caution though that the efforts to transform housing in our state are active. Just because this bill died, doesn't mean that this effort is dead, um, and in fact, I expect that potentially within the next month, month and a half, there'll be another bill that may rise up that I'm already keeping an eye on, that we are keeping an eye on, that will probably take the mantle of this one. So we're being vigilant, uh, this is not done, and so we're having discussions with the governor's office and the legislature on this as well. And then lastly, last week was Public Works Week, um, and so, um, I wanna acknowledge our public works personnel for all they do for our city. I think aside from our law enforcement personnel, um, I think our public personnel, public works personnel are the most visible aspect in our community of the service that a city provides to our residents, so they absolutely do represent our city, and I think they represent us really finely, so I wanted to thank Lynn and Bernie and his whole team for all they do for our, for our residents in our city, so, thank you, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Garza, I just wanted to have a couple of, a few comments here, um, George Chevrolet was recognized as the Chevrolet Dealer of the Year, um, that was, that happened a cou- couple of weeks ago. I didn't realize, it's a big deal, I got word, invitation for, uh, to join, to join them in, uh, employee appreciation lunch. So I went there and I didn't realize, it's a big deal, somebody, someone from, um, uh, GM came about and presented a big trophy uh, in recognition of this wonderful, uh, achievement, so, again, congratulations to Jeff Estabrooks and, uh, George Chevrolet, uh, for being the Chevrolet Dealer of the Year. I wanna piggyback on Councilmember Hamada, on his comments about volunteer recognition, I wanna thank, uh, all those volunteers, uh, who make, um, Bellflower a great city to, to live, work, and play. And a special mention to, um, Mrs. Asuncion Castillo as the Volunteer of the Year, and Isabella Esparsa, who is the Student Volunteer of the Year. I also wanna thank, um, Public Works for the great work that they do, um, they're, they quietly do the work around the city, uh, and I will leave it at that. Uh, and also I want to, um, give a shout-out to Sue Baker, who is the Chief Operating Officer of YMCA, she's retiring from, uh, the YMCA after forty-five years of, uh, great service uh, to our community and the rest of Long Beach. And tonight, if you noticed, we, the City Council approved the budget for fiscal years nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one. I want to personally thank, um, uh, City Manager Jeff Stewart, um, Director of Finance, uh, Tay, Tay, Tayri, and all the directors and all the employees for helping put together this budget, it is a balanced budget, although it's very tight, uh, it is a balanced budget, and I think it's a good direction that the city is going in the next couple of years, so. Uh, again, thank you so much for the work that you, that you put in, uh, in putting together this budget. So with that, um, we're adjourning this me, tonight's meeting in memory of Jim Hop to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, June ninth, June tenth, two thousand nineteen, this meeting is adjourned.